The safety and welfare of our students and staff at the Muskogee County School District is the utmost importance. This initiative by the Columbus Consolidated Government and the Columbus Police Department will further enhance the well-being of our students transitioning from home to the school environment.
We're gonna have twenty school zones by August eighth, and ninety days after that there'll be additional ten schools. Additional ninety days after that, there'll be another ten schools for a total of forty schools. Let's say you're driving, you're approaching a school zone, you'll see a neon yellow sign. That neon yellow sign will say photo-in-force school zone. After you pass that sign, you'll approach another sign, it'll have the actual reduced speeds for that school itself, and you also probably see an additional two flashing yellow lights, however, it's not a requirement. You pass that sign, you're gonna approach another device. In this device, you might tell yourself, I've never seen something like that before, what is that? If you're speeding, it will take a picture of the back of your vehicle on your license plate. Normally, they're gonna be active one hour before, during school, and one hour after. So if there's a reduced speed, let's say twenty-five miles per hour, it'll be enforcing twenty-five miles per hour. While schools in session is gonna be enforcing the normal speed, and then one hour after, it's gonna be enforcing a reduced speed. However, there are exceptions to the rule. Clubview Elementary School, the one hour before is gonna cover six forty-five to eight forty-five. After-school is one thirty to four P.M. Now, however, that one hour before and one hour after is gonna be general rule. They're gonna have to be traveling in excess of ten miles per hour. So if the speed limit is twenty-five, they'll be found in violation at thirty-six.
I am Katrina Long, I am the proud principal here at Reese Road Leadership Academy. Our first commitment to our parents, our students, and all of our stakeholders is to ensure the safety and provide a nurturing environment for our children. We do have a number of walkers in our neighborhood because they can walk to school on our sidewalks. So we should ensure their safety by not speeding through the school zone.
In order to educate them, we have to get them from home to school safely. Approximately twenty-five hundred students per day walk to school in Columbus, and the implementation of the Speed Enforcement Camera Program should significantly reduce the risk associated with those walkers every day transitioning from home to school.
If somebody's found in violation, your first offense is seventy-five dollars with a possible twenty-five dollar processing fee for a hundred dollars. Every second subsequent one will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars with additional possible twenty-five dollar processing fee for a total of a hundred and fifty dollars. That information gets sent to Red Speed, it goes through a two-person vetting process. If somebody's found in violation, the information's sent to Columbus Police Department where we do an additional vetting process. If the individual's not found in violation, it's denied. If they're found in violation for that third vetting process, it'll be sent back to Red Speed, at which time Red Speed will go through the billing process with the registered owner of the vehicle. The information's gonna be on a ticket itself, there's gonna be a website posted, or there's gonna be a phone number posted. You can pay by credit card, or you can pay by money order. This is gonna be a civil penalty, which means there will be no points assessed to driver's driving record, and it will not impact insurance negatively. That money will be sent to the city, and it will be earmarked for local enforcement and public safety initiatives. If the fee is not paid, the registered owner will not be able to re-register his vehicle, and there will be a lien placed on his title.
I hope that this PSA is a reminder that when we're out to pad our time to make sure that we're planning so that we're not rushing through these areas, we don't want any mishaps with any of our students.
This initiative by the Columbus Police Department will further what we do on a daily basis of providing a safe environment for our campuses. This will allow an accountability system for those that transition and drive around our campuses on a daily basis.
Nestled in the heart of beautiful Columbus, Georgia, MCSD is a dynamic public school system dedicated to fostering the minds of tomorrow. With a diverse array of fifty-six schools, centers, and magnet programs, MCSD is the cornerstone of education for a thriving community of over thirty thousand students. As the county's second-largest employer, MCSD prides itself on a dedicated team of over five thousand five hundred professionals. Under the inspiring leadership of our Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. David Lewis, the district is steadfast in its commitment to its mission to inspire and equip all students to achieve unlimited potential. MCSD's vision is to be a beacon of educational excellence, a place where every individual is known, valued, and inspired. This vision is not merely aspirational, but a guiding principle that shapes every aspect of the district's operations. Within our school district, education transcends the classroom. It is a community effort, a family endeavor, and a pathway to a brighter future. Every student is given the tools and support they need to succeed, and every educator is empowered to make a meaningful impact. Together, we are building a legacy of excellence, one student at a time, as we serve the needs of others with unwavering dedication and passion. We are the Muskogee County School District.
Welcome back. Your dreams were your ticket, I. Welcome back to that same old place that you laughed about. Well, the names have all changed since you hung around, but those dreams have remained and they've turned around. Ooh, they've got the region.
Ooh, they've got the region.
Yeah, where we need ya.
Yeah, where we need ya.
Yeah, we tease him a lot 'cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back.
Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back.
Good evening, welcome to our August nineteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four regularly scheduled board meeting. And today, we have the Double Churches Elementary Wildcat Safety Patrol. They're very excited to lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the American flag this evening. The Wildcat Patrol is led by Catalina Kardlidge, and under the leadership of proud Principal Dr. Antron Murray and Assistant Principal Andrea Reese, the Double Churches Elementary Wildcats have developed a servant leadership group called Positive Pals. Paw, like Wildcat Paw. Led by Ms. Lauren Hall. The Pals sponsored a three-community service project last school year, collecting canned foods for the Wynton Neighborhood Network, winter clothing for the Saraspano Clothing Bank, and pet supplies for Paw's Humane Society. We also hosted, or they also hosted their first school musical, Pirates, led by Maureen Gerard. And they participated in elementary sports such as basketball, running club, cheerleading. And in addition to the extracurricular activities, they are very proud of the growth of the learners and scholars that have demonstrated over the educational platforms and GMASS. So, welcome, the Double Churches Elementary Wildcat Safety Patrol. All right, boys and girls.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, my name is Libby Lopez, I am in fifth grade, I am in Ms. May's class, and I am captain of Safety Patrol.
Hi, um, wait, I'm Adeline Petty, and I'm in fifth grade. My, my position in Safety Patrol is Lieutenant, and I'm in Ms. Presley's class.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Owen, and I'm in fifth grade in Ms. May's class, and I am an officer.
My name is Lacy Stinson, and I'm in fourth grade, and I'm in Ms. Bathauer's class. In, in Safety Patrol, I'm Officer.
My name is Jamelle Wiley, I'm in fourth grade, my teacher is Ms. Norris, and my Safety Patrol position is Officer.
My name's Parker Bradley, and I'm in Ms. Bathauer's class, and I'm in fourth grade, and I am Officer.
Very good. Okay. Good job, good job, good job, good job. I also want to recognize all of the parents and everyone who support these boys and girls. If you would stand so that we can recognize you, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you, thank you, have a great year. Next, we will have our inspiration by Ms. Laura McCray.
Thank y'all, tonight's inspiration to me is very appropriate for the beginning of a school year. It's by Thomas Edison. It said, "Opportunity is missed by most people because it is dressed in overalls and looks like work." And that reminder that most things in life, you've gotta put in a little extra work to get there. Thank y'all.
Thank you so very much. Quite fitting, as you said, I need a motion to approve the absent of Mark Cantrell and Nikki Tillery. All right, that was by Ms. Frey, second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, next, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner, all in favor, raise your hand. I think that's everybody, Ms. Jones. Next, we have our district-wide recognitions by Ms. Kimberly Wright.
Good evening. I am Kimberly Wright, Director of Communications, and these are our August recognitions. During the summer, many of our Career Technical and Agricultural Education, CTAE, teachers and administrators from Muskogee County School District participated in the Georgia Association of Career and Technical Education, GACTE, Summer Conference held in Athens, Georgia. This event brought together over two thousand educators dedicated to advancing career and technical education across the state. We are thrilled to announce that Victoria Thomas, Senior Director of CTAE, STEAM, and Robotics, received the prestigious GACTE Administrator of the Year Award. This esteemed recognition highlights her exceptional leadership and contributions to the field. Victoria will go on to represent our district at the ACTE Region Two Awards in October 2025, where she will compete against the other top administrators from the region. Congratulations, Victoria, on this prestigious honor.
Congratulations to you, there's a microphone.
Well, thank you so much, I wanna thank Dr. Lewis and the board for giving me the opportunity to be recognized in front of my community. No recognition or no award that you get is earned by you alone. So I wanna recognize my team that's here tonight, Cherie Tovey and Amanda Toley, and I don't know if anyone else from my team is here. Also want to recognize my DTL peers, Division of Teaching and Learning, that we work side by side and always think about putting kids first. So any recognition that I get is shared with those folks that helped me the most. And also, I have the support of my family, and my dad is here, a lifelong educator from Flor- in Florida and in Georgia. Mr. Nathan Brown. And my husband, Kenneth Thomas, who is also an educator in Harris County High School. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I now yield to Mr. Corey Neal, who will present the Georgia Leads Award and the Power of We.
Good evening. The Georgia Department of Education implemented a new pilot program for educators called Elevate, which changes the eleva- the evaluation process. This Elevate model was implemented for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Muskogee County School District was one of twelve counties in the state of Georgia that were selected to participate in this pilot. Muskogee County School District had six schools to participate in the Elevate pilot. Teachers could achieve certain levels in the pilot, the highest level being the accomplished teacher level. Accomplished teachers are those who've mastered all ten targeted teacher performance standards and demonstrated exemplary classroom performance and strong student learning outcomes as they mentored colleagues who promote teacher growth and student learning. Only six achieved this accomplished teacher level out of all the twelve counties. Muskogee County had two of the six that reached this accomplished level, teacher level. One which we will honor tonight, and one will be honored next month. Both were teachers at Rainey McCullough School of Arts, and tonight, we want to acknowledge and recognize Kelly Taylor. and tonight, we want to acknowledge and recognize Kelly Taylor.
Well, I am Dr. Kelly Taylor. This is my 25th year teaching in Muskogee County. I've been at Baker, Arnold, and Richards before going to Rainey McCullough's. I've had a wonderful time as an educator. I consider myself a lifelong learner, so when Georgia Leads came up, there was no question about it that I was going to put my best effort to achieve those badges. It is a, a, a new way of looking at evaluations where we don't just look at a test score. We actually are focused on giving them support and professional development that can help them grow. I'm excited that Georgia DOE has asked us to go ahead and take part in scoring new candidates in the spring, along with being a part of a webinar series that they're going to put together. So hopefully, we'll get to continue to help with the future schools that are in the pilots.
Congratulations, Ms. Taylor. Well, I, I don't know if you have family here. I know you have your school, family, and your principal. So congratulations to you. If there are any family members, please wave. Thank you so very much.
Madam Chair, if I may take a moment of personal privilege. We are just so fortunate to have these outstanding representatives of our school district who are great ambassadors for our district, represent us well throughout the state, and bring that recognition back here to Muskogee County. But thank you for the tremendous work that both of you do in representing in your respective areas, our district, your schools, and the profession. Congratulations.
We are excited to present the first Power of We Award for this school year. The Power of We Award winner for August 2024 is none other than Becky Baker, Custodian at Richards Middle School. If she would come at this time. Ms. Baker exhibits excellence every day. She greets everyone with a sunny disposition, and it's concerned about meeting the needs of others. She treats all with equal respect. She goes above and beyond to make our rooms spotless, ensuring that every area is maintained at a high standard. She's always eager to help when needed and holds others to high standards as well. Often, she anticipates what the teachers may need even before we have a chance to ask. She is a ray of sunshine who makes our days brighter. She is by far the best custodian I've ever seen. It was amazing to see my room after summer break. She had everything in place as if I had set it up myself. She did this for each of the rooms that she was responsible for. She's an exceptionally kind person that greets everyone with a smile and hug every morning. Ms. Baker's work is nothing short of amazing. Her dedication, hard work, and positive attitude have made her an invaluable part of the team at Richards Middle School. We truly appreciate everything that she does. The Principal, Dr. Wizard, Dr. Dwayne Wizard, and Region Chief, Mr. Matt Bell.
Family to stand up, please.
Yes, the cheerleaders.
Dr. Wizard, Ms. Digger, my Richard Warrior family, I would like to thank y'all so much.
Congratulations to you. Thank you for being outstanding.
That concludes our recognitions.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to everyone. That is outstanding. So next, we have an action item. It's the new partnership initiative. The superintendent is recommend that we, recommending that we approve the joint partnership with the Columbus State University and Columbus Technical College, Diamond Magnet Academy to become a professional development laboratory school.
Thank you. Thank you. We are very privileged this evening to have joining us. We have Dr. Stuart Rayfield, President of Columbus State University, as well as Ms. Martha Ann Todd, President of Columbus Technical University, Dr. John Lester, Chief Engagement Officer, Dr. Maggie, uh, Mar- I'm sorry, Margie Yates, Dean of College of Education and Health Professions, and Mr. Roger Hatcher, Director and Center of Quality Teaching and Learning, as well as the Principal of Diamond Magnet Academy, Ms. Emily Wilson. And the recommendation and rationale-
Let me get a motion.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Frey. All right, now, we're going to present and-
Just, just as a synopsis of, in collaboration with Columbus State University and Columbus Technical College, I am recommending a joint partnership for Diamond Magnet Academy to become a professional development laboratory school to build upon and enhance Diamond's existing Georgia STEM certification effective with the start of next school year. The proposal, the proposed professional development lab school offers a unique and innovative approach to education with access to teaching methods and materials aligned with STEM and STEAM, as well as additional resources and funding opportunities that will enhance the overall learning experience for students, both students in the school as well as our post-secondary education students who will gain practical experience in the real classroom setting, allowing them to apply their theoretical knowledge and teaching pedagogy. Similarly, the Muskogee County School District will benefit from having access to the post-secondary institution's respective resources, research, and expertise in education, enriching the curriculum and teaching practices. I could go on and on. We have a proposal that I'll be giving more in depth, but for this evening, we are just thrilled. This obviously deepens and broadens our partnerships with both of our post-secondary institutions, with Columbus State and Columbus Technical College, in providing so many different resources for our students at Diamond. And we are excited about this because as this becomes successful, there's an opportunity for us to replicate this in other schools throughout the district. And it is very unique because there are lots of laboratory schools out there, but I'm not familiar with many that are associated with an actual school campus in which the students, and again, it's that full circle. Our students go to Columbus State to become teachers. They come back to our schools to be teachers in professional life. So we are so excited about this and looking forward to the opportunity, assuming you all are going to approve it. But we'll go from here and have that happen.
Are there any additional questions? All right, we're ready to vote now.
Yes.
All right, that passes.
And I'll invite some of our speakers to come forward. And as they're doing so, this is really the culmination of about two and a half, three years' worth of planning at least in my tenure, so. What's that?
Can we verify the vote for the record for Ms. Jackson? Are you logged in? You're, you're affirmative?
Yes.
She's affirmative.
So let's make that great, wonderful, thank you. And now, we have with us Dr. Stuart Rayfield, President of Columbus State University.
So I want to start by thanking this board, Dr. Lewis, because I think this is a real opportunity for Columbus to showcase what it does best, and that is partnerships. And this is a partnership that creates a public educational ecosystem from the time they start with you all to the time they end up with Martha Ann Todd or us at Columbus State University. And we think this is a great opportunity for our students to be embedded in seeing the real-life practices of what works and how they can scale that. So we're so appreciative of your willingness to be innovative and think differently. This is going to benefit our students tremendously, and we're just so excited to be a part of this partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Rayfield. I'm Margie Yates. I'm the Dean of the College of Education and Health Professions, and I wish to extend my appreciation to Dr. Lewis and our board members here. We are so excited about this partnership. And I would also like to extend my appreciation to President Todd because having that complete ecosystem is going to be an incredible partnership. It's a cliche, but it does take a village, and the village is here. And Dr. Lewis, I understand there have been conversations about this for 20 years, at least on our side. You now have the right leadership in place to make this happen. Diamond Elementary is such a great place to start. And remember, I said to start. When I toured Diamond, I was so impressed that they are STEM certified. They have a strong foundation already. They have an outdoor classroom. They have a great community outreach program with their food pantry. The pieces are in place, and we just want to partner and help it grow and be better and better. Now, I said it's a place to start because that's what a lab school is for. We're a professional development lab school, meaning it is going to be housed in Muskogee County School District. We are there to support that, but it's also a lab school where we train teachers across the district, across the region, across the state, to come and see what is working and to take back those things that would fit in their schools and their environment. And so this is the beginning, folks, so thank you so much. I think of your expression when you were named president. We are over the moon about this, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Wilson. I'm the Principal of Diamond Magnet Academy, and I'm here with Mr. Michael Collier, our Assistant Principal. And we are both incredibly excited about this opportunity. I wanted to take this chance to say thank you to Dr. Lewis, to the board, as well as to our representatives from Columbus State and Columbus Tech. When Dr. Lewis brought this to me, I was over the moon excited that you all are thinking about Diamond as an opportunity for both professional development, for our teachers, for the students that are able to come into Diamond, and for our boys and girls. As you all know, Diamond is an outreach school. We are all about community and bringing the community into our school as well as service learning and what we can do to support our community as well. And so having that partnership with both Columbus State and Columbus Tech is going to be the next thing in our, being able to move forward for positive experiences for our students and being able to continue to grow. And more importantly, growth for our boys and girls and opportunities that we're able to bring into Diamond to be able to support that growth within our school community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. And I am very pleased to hear that it's a place to start because we do want your student teachers to have a varied experience, to enrich how they serve our students because we believe that public education is the great equalizer. And so we are pleased about the partnership and glad that this is the start. Diamond is the start.
And I just want to say thank you to the board because we've adopted some pretty innovative approaches with the Brewer and now this lab school. It's a little bit different idea about lab, what laboratory schools can be. And there's more to come, so we'll keep you posted. Thank you. Thank you again for coming this evening.
Okay, so next, we have our public agenda. We started out with nine. I think we're down to six speakers, and I'm not completely sure who's not here, but I'm going to call all nine names. Brenda Jones, Annette Sullivan, Shay Anderson, Delisha Butts, Vanessa Veressa Brown. I know Ms. Teresa Alamin is not here. Sadi Abdullah, Von Marie Cardona, and Starlet Pew. So I'll call them in the order that, that you appear. And first person up is Ms. Brenda Jones. You would come to the podium if you're here. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and to the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Speakers are, speakers' remarks should be directed to the board and shall be limited to five minutes. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. If an individual desires to speak, they may contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda. The board meeting or work session is not the appropriate place to address either criticisms or particular employees or individual parent complaints. When such complaints have not been first addressed, to the attention of the appropriate administrator for resolutions. Citizens are encouraged to follow normal channels to address individual parent complaints or concerns. Ms. Brenda Jones, thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, Muskogee County School Board members. My name is Brenda Jones, and I am both an engaged Columbus community member, retired accountant from West Central Georgia Regional Hospital, and a former parent of Muskogee County School. Both of our children, beautiful daughters, graduated from Shaw High School, and both went on to graduate from the University of Georgia and Spelman College. They both are contributing citizens of the community and have done well for themselves. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about a matter that I believe is of great importance to the future of our children and the educational landscape of our district. I stand before you today to advocate for the approval of the proposed charter school, Dominion Purpose Academy, in our district. As a parent and grandparent, I am deeply invested in the quality and variety of educational opportunities available to children and to all children in our community. I have watched my daughter and her team design Dominion Purpose Academy alongside the community. After watching her lead all the students at Patch Preschool on the Old Fort Bennett to being the class vice president at Shaw High School and being the class president at Spelman College, I know that she has the skills and experience to lead Dominion Purpose Academy. As a community member, I am committed to ensuring that our public education system remains dynamic. I am a member of Spiritfield Ministries, a volunteer at the Infantry Museum, and a member of CLIR, Citizen Law Enforcement Association Academy at the Police Department here in Columbus, Georgia, and many more community organizations. Each of these organizations make Columbus a beautiful place, and I know that Dominion Purpose Academy will add to the beauty of our city. Over the years, I have seen firsthand the diverse needs of students and the various approaches that can make a difference in their educational journeys. Our tradition of public school provide an excellent foundation, but I believe that the instruction of a charter school can offer additional benefits that complete and enhance our existing educational system and our families' needs and deserve the opportunity to, to choose a charter school. Charter schools are designed to foster implication and flexibility in education. They have the unique beauty, ability to create a specialized program tailored to specific interests such as advanced technology, the arts, or international studies. This kind of target approach can ignite a passion of learning in students and help them develop skills, ignite a passion for learning in students that helps them develop skills that align with their individual talents and career aspirations. Dominion Purpose Academy will use divine thinking as a through line throughout the entire school. The lead founder, my daughter, Dr. Latasha Jones Adams, has traveled throughout the country visiting charter schools that uses design thinking. She also reaches, researches businesses like Apple, who also use divine thinking. I know that knowing divine thinking will help our community. Moreover, charter schools often promote a greater parental environment and community engagement. They provide an opportunity for families to have a more direct role in their children's education, which can lead to stronger support system and more meaningful educational experiences. And our community, where engagement and correlation are high value, this aspect of charter schools is particularly appealing and Georgia charter school student fare better on the Georgian milestone than traditional public school. and Georgia charter schools student fare better on the Georgian milestone than traditional public schools. I understand that the decision to approve a charter school requires careful evaluation. It is essential to ensure that any new education institution maintains high standards of academic excellence, financial responsibility, and ethical governance. From what I have reviewed about the proposed charter school and what I know about the founder, I am confident that Dominion Purpose Academy meets these rigorous criteria and is well-prepared to offer high-quality education to our students.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it so much. Ms. Annette Sullivan? Thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, Muskogee County Schools Board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Annette Sullivan, and I am a retired teacher with 35 years of experience in education. I stand before you not just as an educator, but an advocate for the future of our children. Today, I'm here to discuss the exciting potential of a new charter school in our district, Dominion Purpose Academy, a potential that I believe could profoundly benefit our community and enrich the educational opportunities available to our students. Throughout my career, I had the privilege of witnessing the diverse needs and unique talents of students. Each child is different, and a one-size-fits-all approach can sometimes fall short of meeting those needs. This is where charter schools have the potential to make a significant impact. Charter schools use individualized learning that focus on project-based learning, design, thinking. Each child will have an opportunity to explore topics that are important to them. This will help the children to explore their diverse interests. This will motivate them to learn. Charter school offers a flexible approach to education. This flexibility can lead to the development of specialized curriculum that addresses each child's interests. Students at Dominion Purpose Academy will create service learning projects that would implement within the community. What they would implement into within the community. This focus on community engagement will not only aid the family at the academy, but the entire community. Furthermore, charter schools often emphasize community environment and parental engagement. This creates an environment where families feel more connected and invest in their child's education. This community-centered approach can lead to stronger support system for students and more collaborative educational experience. The academy seeks to cultivate confident thinkers. As a retired educator, I know that our community needs Dominion Purpose Academy as another choice for families. In closing, I urge you to consider the approval of this charter school not as a challenge to our existing program or system, but as an opportunity to expand and enrich the educational choices available to our children. By embracing this initiative, we are investing in a future where every student has access to the learning environment that best suit their needs and aspirations. I am optimistic that together, we can create a vibrant and diverse educational landscape that ensures every child in our community has the opportunity to thrive. I understand that the decision to approve a charter school requires careful evaluation, but from what I have reviewed from the proposed charter school and what I know about the founder, I am confident that Dominion Purpose Academy meets the criteria. I believe that approving this charter school ensures that every child has access to an education that is tailored to their needs and interests. Thank you for considering my perspective. I hope you would join me in supporting the approval of this charter school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Shay Anderson? All right, Delisha Butts?
To the Muskogee County School Board and all those gathered tonight, thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. My name is Delisha Butts. I serve as a finance committee member on the board at Dominion Purpose Academy. My professional life consists of a tax analyst, tax accountant. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in corporate taxation. My purpose in speaking with you today is to advocate for the approval of Dominion Purpose Academy and my educational options for families like mine in the community. As a native of Columbus, Georgia, I have matriculated from pre-K through high school with some time here at Columbus State University. My education experience helped me to become the person I am today, but it did not come without some challenges. I am today who I am because of my education experience. I grew up in public housing and dealt with all the challenges that often came with living in poor communities. When my mother wanted my sibling and I to have a better educational experience, we moved in with my grandmother and slept on sofas until we were able to transition into a better school zone on our own. Moving to an area with a higher socioeconomic status exposed me to great opportunities like taking mission trips to Nova Scotia. But my friends who stayed in those former communities did not have those same equitable experiences. Not all families have the opportunities to move into a better school zone, especially those families who live in some of the poorest zip codes in Georgia, 31901 and 31903, where I formerly reside. These families and all families deserve access to quality schools regardless of the zip codes. This is not fair. This is not equitable. Access and opportunities should be afforded to all children alike. After all, we live in Columbus, Georgia, the amazing city. The alarming Georgia Milestones data from Muskogee County Schools affirm the need for a charter school like Dominion Purpose Academy. In Muskogee County, 2024 Georgia Milestone Spring End of Course Proficiency Rate students scored at 37.5% proficiency rate in American Literature and 24.3% proficiency in U.S. history for the high school courses. The Georgia Milestone ELA inner-school scores were consistently low as well. Third grade scoring at 29.1% proficiency, fourth grade scoring at 26.4 proficiency, fifth grade scoring at 37.3% proficiency, sixth grade scoring at 27.7 proficiency, seventh grade scoring at 28.5% proficiency, and eighth grade scoring at 34.5 proficiency. In contrast, Georgia's charter school students consistently outperform traditional public school students. Georgia's charter schools eighth grade received a math score that was four points higher above traditional students and a reading score that was eight points higher. The Dominion Purpose Academy has worked intently to design a school alongside the community that focused on relationships, rigor, and relevance. We have taken into account the unique context of Muskogee County families and the resources needed of our community. Given the proficient level of Muskogee County students, we have created an overall program to demonstrate rapid growth in student outcomes focused on research-based practices. Our school would cultivate confident thinkers who possess the knowledge, skills, and disposition to impact their community. Thank you in advance for approving Dominion Purpose Academy and partner with our board as we offer more solutions to families and focus on student success. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Butts. Verissa Brown?
Good evening, board members and Muskogee County District Schools. Hi, my name is Verissa. I'm here with my son Bryson and Anthony, whom are currently in sixth and fifth grade. I am a Dominion Purpose Academy supporter and advocate for this institution to be approved. I have lived in Muskogee County for two years now and like to see families have more options for schooling. I believe that the curriculum options that will be offered through Dominion Purpose Academy will better suit my children and other families like mine due to many hands-on options and the focus on relationships, rigor, and relevance. It is very much needed because there are limited options now and restricts the learning to one main way to deliver the curriculum to the children. My boys enjoy designing and project-based learning that is connected to making a difference in the community. They need the option to do these things in school, and Dominion Purpose Academy will allow them to do it. Dominion Purpose Academy is different and allows the family engagement within the school. I have been a volunteer with Dominion Purpose Academy and have worked with other families who would like to attend the school as well. As a parent, I have enjoyed learning about their hands-on approach that will grab and hold the attention of children with little to no attention spans. It also gives room for a space to be creative and not confined to one way of thinking. Traditional public schools have a more rigid structure in delivering the curriculum, which doesn't leave room for other subjects to be discussed, such as life skills. Charter schools have the flexibility to adapt the learning needs of students more so than traditional public schools. I believe approving the Dominion Purpose Academy is necessary and a win for all because it gives the children the opportunity to grow in a natural way and yearn to learn. It gives parents the option and ability to equip their children better for the world through being an active part of the school. You cannot lose by approving this institution. Given the current scores in Muskogee County, we need other options. Thank you for considering the families of Columbus who need a charter school like Dominion Purpose Academy.
Please approve Dominion Purpose Academy.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Sadi Abdulla? There you go.
Good afternoon. I came to the board meeting last week because, actually, for one reason, and that was to hear the discussion about Dominion Purpose Academy. Unfortunately, there was none. And so that is really concerning to me as a citizen in Muskogee County Schools because we deserve the right to have heard a robust discussion, whichever way the board decides to go. The community should have heard a discussion, and we did not. Now, one of the questions that Dr. Chambers, and congratulations on your doctorate, that Dr. Chambers asked was, are there other districts who are scoring better than we are, than Muskogee? So I looked at only third grade because I don't want to sit here and take up too much of your time, and I looked at other districts that have about the same amount of third graders that we have. I don't have time to go into all the demographics and all of that. That can easily be done, but I'm not doing that. Because what I know is, if you have this many students and they're able to score proficient on this test, the problem is not the test, which was what your question was. So it doesn't matter the demographic. The problem is not the test. The G-Mass is not the problem. Now, just because we live next door to Harris County, I also checked Harris County because I often want to go back to farm life. Harris County for reading, 78.4%. ELA is 53.2. This is all third grade. Savannah was 58.5 for reading. For ELA, it was 30.7. And just as a reminder, Muskogee was 56.7 for reading for third grade, 28.1 for ELA. Cherokee, 70.3 reading, 47.3 ELA. Columbia, 80.2 for reading, 58.9 ELA. Richmond, 48% for reading, 20.6. Houston or Houston, I think it's Houston, but I don't live there, so 72.2 for reading. I thought it was Houston. I was like, I swear I've heard Houston, but anyway. And 45% for ELA. So what that says is, it's possible. It is possible for our students to do better. It's all about what we're doing to ensure that they're getting what they need. So the other thing I looked at, and it was actually purely incidental. I was like, okay, what other schools are just knocking it out the box? So here are the reading scores of the schools that are knocking it out the box. International Charter, I didn't expect them to all be charters. This is just what happened when I pulled these numbers and looked across the line. I was like, well, dang, they're all charter schools. International Charter, 89.5. Skantilia Charter, 84.6. Calwida Charter, 85%. Resurgence Hall, 90.7% of their students are reading on grade level. 90%. Academy for Classical, 91.7% are reading on grade level. Yihong Academy, 85.4. And Amana Academy, which is also a design-thinking charter school, 83.8% of their kids are reading on grade level. All I'm saying is, there needs to be some kind of discussion for parents who want a different option for their children but can't afford to choose private school. That shouldn't be the thing that stops them from finding what's best for how their child learns. So again, there should have been a discussion. There should have been a discussion. And we did not get that benefit. So today, I'm sure you're going to vote. So that means some backroom talking must have occurred, I hope, because I would expect that you're not going to just vote without having any discussion anywhere at any time. But as citizens, as a parent of children in this district, who've been served so-so, parents deserve to know what your thinking is because you represent us. You don't represent the superintendent. You're actually his boss. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abdulla. Von Marie Cardona? And Starlet Pew? Okay. Then that concludes our public agenda. And I see the first action item, 5.01, is this charter school proposal that we were just listening to about on the public agenda. So 5.01. Superintendent, you want to address?
So the request, and there are two forms of approval for a charter school in Georgia. One is being a district-sponsored charter, and one is a state-sponsored charter. There are two different avenues. They tend to run parallel. They can apply for both. And so when we receive a charter proposal, the process we put into place is pretty consistent across the board. We have a team of experts look at the proposal. We ask them to go back and ask for additional follow-up questions and inquiries of the petitioner and so on, which we did. Dr. Smith is currently the chief academic officer prior to him. We had Mr. Keith Seifert in that role. The two of them and their staff, again comprised of experts within their respective areas and fields and training to include finance, curriculum instruction, technology, all the different aspects and operational aspects of a school district or a school, were given the proposal and have been looking at it for better part, I think, of six or so months, I believe, so on. So Dr. Smith is here to kind of share where our assessment landed. Most of you have heard this information, but we wanted to make sure that you are, or we wanted to share that with the public as well as from Dr. Smith's perspective in terms of the expertise provided by those various experts. So Dr. Smith, if you would, please?
All right, thank you. So like Dr. Lewis said, we had a cross-divisional team that reviewed the application. We had an in-person video, or video interview with the Dominion Purpose Academy team. We followed that up with, after we reviewed the application, and we sent some revision requests to them, which they sent back a response to that, which we've reviewed. Probably our three biggest concerns at this point is, number one, the sustainability of revenue. 48.8% of the projected revenue over five years is Um, forty-eight point eight percent of the projected revenue over five years is dependent on grants and donations. Some of those grants may be pretty, um, a goo- a good chance of getting those grants, but we, we don't know. We're seeing that with our, our own federal funding, but we're seeing some projected cuts, um, over the next year for Title I and Title II that have been pretty, uh, strong as far as sustainability goes, and all of a sudden that sustainability is not looking too good right now. So, um, that's a concern for us. Um, there's, there's some budget inconsistencies. Just one example of that was, um, they talked about bringing in a coun- a counselor for the third year, and the budget for that counselor for a full-time position was twelve thousand dollars. Second piece was heavy reliance on external support and contracted services. The external support primarily being the district. If we approve the charter, um, they are essentially looked at as one of our schools. Um, and if they go through the state route, then they're standalone, and we would not be, um, responsible for, for these things. Their student needs have yet to be determined, and that's not to their fault because they don't know who they have yet. But because they're a charter that will be an open application school, um, they will have needs to address. And, um, the concern would be not knowing what those needs are, and it's a projected budget on not knowing what those needs are. Um, in the application, there was reference to, um, accessing, uh, Marshall Success Center for students that have, um, excessive behavior, uh, needs. Um, our, our tribunal process, um, using our district code of conduct. Uh, some of the submitted revisions, our third primary concern, um, still lacks some specificity. So, um, disalignment with state curriculum standards, um, that was an issue. The social studies curriculum maps or unit, um, examples that were provided were based on Common Core, um, state standards and Massachusetts, um, state standards. So we had some concerns with alignment with Georgia standards. Um, there was, uh, not complaint procedures fleshed out. Uh, numerous waivers would be used, which is their right to do. Um, but for each waivers that we, that we, um, claim with the state, we have to have a plan for that waiver of what we're doing. Um, that's gonna make sure that we're still successful in that area. Um, and then a nu- numbered in board policies, um, still need to be created, um, in various areas for them. So those are our, our biggest primary concerns. Um, based on that, we are recommending, um, that we reject this application.
Again, this is due to district oversight, the concerns we have. And again, if it were to be going toward the state and it's approved there, the state would be the oversight agency there. Uh, so those are some of the concerns that we had. Um, and I appreciate the team, all of whom looked at this very carefully. And again, we did follow up on, uh, several occasions, two different inquiries, I believe. Is that correct?
That we had the in-person, uh, interview and then follow-up, uh, revision requests and writing.
All very cooperative. It's just a matter of, again, specificity, over-reliance on what, uh, some of the district's support and resources would be required. And then just the, the, uh, concern about sustainability long-term. So for those reasons, that is our recommendation to the board. Uh, again, it doesn't mean if, if, uh, just to be clear, there is no, uh, recourse, uh, there is recourse. They, of course, can apply toward, uh, for the state. Uh, and if they grant it, then they still can go forward just under that oversight as opposed to the district.
Are there any questions, board members? Any questions? You want your microphone?
Think of, um, private schools or charter schools, and, um, sometimes people associate, uh, them both as the same. Will, um, oh, um, I'm sure I might be asking the wrong, but, um, charter schools, can they accept or reject their students in public schools? We take whatever. We have to. And, um, I know some charter schools, uh, are selective in their, um, in, in terms of the s- children that they accept. So I was, um, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to get a dialogue, but, uh, um, the, um, I'm just wondering if those kinds of issues, I know we have expressed the issue of a money issue and the financial situations that we are in right now. But even given those, we have to provide certain, uh, strict rules and regulations for, like specially-ed students which require, uh, bu- uh, financial assistance. So, and we have, um, reporting that we have to do, and we have to be transparent in terms of having regular, um, board meetings. You know, I know charter schools, they, they set up their own, um, meetings, but they don't have to have this type of, uh, tr- uh, transparency where we have to report to the press when our meetings are. So was that in that charter thing about?
So, so with Dominion Purpose Academy, that was not a concern of ours as far as students are accepting because they're in open application, so they would, it would just be open and who applied would be able to get in. So it was not a concern of ours.
Very good. Now, do you also, was it in there how, um, how they report? How they report, like, um, there were certain conversations about the, uh, test scores at Muskogee County. And, um, the, was in their proposal, that, uh, is there a way of their, their reporting of their scores?
There was not, but if we approve it as a charter for us, then it would be reported through our reporting process because they'd be considered basically a school in Muskogee County.
Anyone else? All right. All right, thank you so much to the speakers. Thank you to, uh, Dr. Smith. We're ready to vote now. Did we put it on the table? We didn't. Okay, I need a motion for item five point zero one. Superintendent's recommendation is to not approve the charter school proposal from Dominion Acad- Purpose Academy. Motion by Ms. Buckner. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Frey. We're ready to vote now. What was that? All right, that item passes. Five point zero two, um, the revised paraprofessional compensation plan, super- Speak in your microphone, Ms. Buckner. Hit your, turn it on.
Ask if we had any concerns about their ability to, um, perform as efficiently as, let's say, Muskogee County. I know they said that they had, um, they could, uh, personalized learning. I know we already also do that. And, um, I think there, the personalized learning, I know they said project learning, I know a lot of, we also have a lot of that too, so were we, or did we, was there any discussion about that?
So there wasn't concerns about their ability to perform because there's no indication either way. Um, because they hadn't, they haven't had a school yet. Um, the primary, the biggest concern was if we had approved them, then we would be taking on additional responsibilities in support of them. Um, and that's just, that, I mean, that was where we ended up.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Spent a lot of time on.
I understood that. I was reading through the proposal that Dr. Lewis had put, that the financial concern was a huge concern and, and I understood what you were saying in terms of where we are now financially. All right, thank you.
All right, I need a motion to approve the revised placement of all other district paraprofessionals on the salary schedule. Uh, uh, but we can do an overview. All right, that was a motion by Ms. Pat Frey. Second by Brad Sly. You're gonna have to put it back up in a minute, the vote option. Presentation and the vote.
Good evening. Janice Floodworth, Chief Financial Officer. Uh, when we, uh, presented the board, uh, the budget back in June to the board, after that point, we received revised information from the state on the pay rate for the pre-K paras. And due to that, we have, um, reevaluated the, uh, scale for the paras and will be, um, presenting to you a resi- revised. Okay. All right, now we're back on track. We got the revised, um, schedule that we're presenting tonight that we would like for you to vote on. As you can see, um, we are moving, uh, we have the grades listed here for, um, FY twenty-four and where we want to move those for FY twenty-five and what that new starting pay will be. And that starting pay is for someone with zero experience, and the pay would go up with experience. And you can see the different gr- um, levels of paras that we have and the rate that would correspond with those paras. So, um, I do have the range for the para professionals. An instructional para with no experience, working seven point five hours a day, a hundred and ninety days a year. Their starting pay would be twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight, uh, dollars. And for a specialized, special ed para with thirty-plus years' experience, working seven point seven-five hours a day, would be thirty-seven, two hundred and ten. So that is the range which, um, the pairs' pay would fall. And any questions? The total budget impact would be, um, approximately one point five million dollars above any increases that we had, um, projected, um, in the budget.
All right, Ms. McCray?
Um, sorry, I was thinking we were gonna get a little more detailed than that. I guess what I, you know, I know the prompting, um, behind this was, had to do with the, um, bonus that was, I mean, the raise that was given by the governor to the pre-K para professionals. I know that the board was very adamant in wanting to make that higher than what we had already budgeted. And so I just, and I know I've seen the information. I just kind of like it read out into the public so that when the para professionals see their checks, they know that they got what we said we were giving them. And my understanding, which I haven't seen up here, so I want to make sure, was that each level was gonna be bumped up by over five thousand dollars, which is from what it was last year.
From what it was last year. That is correct.
So, um, when we asked for the number of para pros, I think, what was the number? You gave us four hundred?
We have just under, um, five hundred para pros.
I just did some quick math. If we give each one of them five thousand dollars, and it's about four hundred and eighty-five para pros, wouldn't that be closer to two point four million dollars?
In the budget, we already had part of that increase, um, allotted. We had, we were moving, we were already moving the paras up, um, in the original budget that we had. This is on top of that.
So, so on top of, what did we approve in the original budget? Do you remember?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
In front of me.
Okay, so additional one, an additional one point five on top of.
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay. And it, I think, um, I would like to see, like, the attachment. We're voting tonight. Um, and if the revised plan were attached, it would be easier for us to just press yes. If that's what we all, what we talked about. Does that make sense? It says, here's the revised plan, but there's no, I don't have a revised plan attached.
Yeah, I, I, it, um, this was not attached to the board agenda.
I just want to make sure that what we're voting on, this is what we know we're voting on and that we've seen it and it was attached, and when we vote yes, it's for this particular scale. So if we could attach that, so we can just glance at it, make sure it's what we discussed.
Is that in the attachment, the, the chart that we just showed? Wasn't that in the agenda? But didn't you put something on the agenda? I thought that, oh, I, okay, that was miscommunication. That was supposed to be on the agenda.
I can send it. I can send this PowerPoint to you. We can present this. I will do that when I get back to my desk if I, instead of doing it right here. All right.
Madam Chair, I just, I just have one question.
Um, not this particular.
Yeah, if we approve this tonight, when will they see this increase?
They will see this in their August thirty-first check.
Okay.
I just have a comment, and that is, um, it was very important for the board education to make sure that the paras got, um, uh, an, or, an, an increase in the August thirty-first check. Uh, the, there, I'm sorry, it was very, it was, it was a big concern that the, um, for the board, that the paras got a, an increase in this check, in August check. To the extent there, that, that there was one proposal and the board insisted that additional funds be allotted for, uh, for the paras because we know how challenging it is for our economy right now. And we looked at what was being proposed. We looked at what they already raised, uh, what they were already making. So it was very, very important for us that they get this increase in the August thirty-first check. So whatever everybody on the board wants to see, make sure that you show them that so we can move forward with this vote so they can get paid.
Yeah, we don't want to hold up the, the August paycheck, but let me just further clarify that. Um, to reemphasize, you know, we got here because the governor's proposal was focused on pre-K para. And this board did what it typically does and try not to exclude other members of the same group. And so this additional one point whatever million will include the other paras that are not, uh, pre-K paras. Um, because we, we think that, that it's important that we, um, not create any, um, morale issues and/or people who are just starting, um, ha- making the same amount of money as, as a para that's been com- truly committed and working hard and, and working several years. And so that is the, that's what we're considering, and I, I'm, I'm prepared to vote while they get this attachment on here. If you all are prepared to vote now, because the, the screen is still up. Are we prepared to vote?
That, I want to make sure that when we vote, that we're voting for the amount that this board pushed and advocated for.
Put that screen back up. Let me read that into the, let me read that into.
Read it into the record.
Put your screen back up. Let me read it into the record, please.
But, but also.
Doing that, okay, go ahead.
I want to make sure that not just the starting pay, but remember there is a scale and they should continue to increase because we were trying to get regular pairs as close to that eighteen dollars, um, an hour that pre-K was getting.
But this, is this scale currently what we go by? That's currently our policy or protocol?
Yes, yes.
Right, and so.
Support scale, grade J, is what the instructional pairs would start with, and that's at the sixteen forty-two an hour. And that's at the 1642 an hour.
And just to be clear, pre-K pairs, there is no step.
Right.
Other pairs, there are step advances as well, but there is no step with pre-K. So there, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
So the scale already exists.
Yes, we just moved them up two places, two positions on the scale.
Right, absolutely. And, and we've seen the scale. And I'm prepared to vote for that scale. I just wanna make sure that that's the scale we're using to pay the paras and that there's no misunderstanding later on. So if we had attached it, it would be really, really simple. But I, I.
I can, like you said, read the various ones into the record.
Let's get Ms. McCray's question before you start.
Yes, let's do that.
I guess my main one is, is it easy for our employees to access the information about these pay scales?
Excuse me, Dr. Lewis.
If you all approve, they will get individual communication, a letter that states exactly.
I think what I wanna make sure is, and that was the reason, because like we saw more than this and I thought we were gonna kinda show this tonight. I just want that when they look at what we saw, if they wanna go to the public agenda or anything, they see specifically what we voted on so that when they go and look at their paycheck, they know they got what we intended. So all I wanna know is if I'm a pre-K teacher and I've been working for 10 years and I get my announcement that my pay has gone up, do I have a way to check and make sure that my pay is now the equivalent of J grade on the pay scale?
On the, on the staff portal, there is the pay scales and they would look at the support pay scale and it lists out all of the years of experience and the corresponding rate of pay for those years of experience so they could go out there and find that. But in addition, the letter that we will be sending out will have a snippet of that pay scale that breaks it down from zero years of experience up to the 30 years.
And because it looks different for every employee, I, I really want to emphasize that they should call human resources before they come to public agenda because we have no idea what each individual or any of the employees' salary information, based on their years of experience, education, and all of that, would look like. So I would really want them to, because it's so individualized, because of the experience and education is going to vary, to, to go to human resources.
Sorry, I didn't mean for them to come speak to us on the public agenda. I just meant that if they pulled up the agenda from our meeting, they could see what we voted on.
What we actually voted on.
Transparency. So no, I was not advocating coming to public agenda. I just meant that they could see it on the agenda that we publicized. So I will reword that. Because in the host of this, I don't wanna lose, you know, questioning it. We are very excited. I know there's always more work to do in what we pay our P, our employees and our staff, but we are ha, very happy that we can move this marker closer to the goal and reward those especially that have been with us for a long time. And so overall, I'm thrilled with this proposal. I just want everybody to know how great it is and understand that. Thank you.
And if you would refresh your agenda, you should be able to see it, Dr. Lewis.
It should be on there, yeah. The only thing I wanna say too is I appreciate the board also recognizing the need for us to look at a comprehensive compensation study so we can make sure that we're always keeping up with where the market value is for each of our employees. Because that is an ongoing issue, but it is a moving target every year, as you can imagine. So I appreciate the commitment. And we'll be bringing that to you in the future to move forward. But that is gonna be critically important. I thank the board for doing that as well because it's something that a compensation study in a system our size should be done pretty routinely just for those various, various aspects of compensation.
And so what, what we're discussing and what's attached is the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Are we ready to vote now? All right, y'all, go ahead and vote. That passes. And so now y'all make sure that the, don't even go home tonight. Just make sure the August paycheck is ready. I was just kidding about not going home. All right, 5.03 is policy A, B, C, D, A. Is it ready? Okay. This is the new House Bill 1280 approved revised board policy, A, B, C, D, A, board member unexpired term fulfillment. Motion second. Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Slatter. Are there any additional questions? All right, we're ready to vote. You have a question? All right.
Because I know we have debated this enough. I am very glad that the changes were made to this that I had asked and wanted. But I will say on the record, I'm still not voting for it because although I know it is legally required, I have a feeling that later, when I wanna change it, somebody will throw back at me that I voted to support it. So I just, I'm not at the moment, but I hope we can get back to it at some point.
All right. Frey, did you vote?
Yep.
All right, that passes. Item 5.04 is also ready. That's the policy G A R H, employee leaves and leave and absences. Motion by Ms. Frey, second. By Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. All right, that item passes. Next item is 5.05, the naming of District 3 Literacy, New Literacy Center. Motion by Ms. Jackson, second. Ms. Chambers, all right, second by Ms. Chambers to officially name the District 3 Literacy Center as the Dr. Thomas H. Brewer Early Innovation Academy. We are ready to vote now. All right, cheerleaders, y'all get ready. All right, that passes. Okay, brew crew, brewer team, congratulations. Thank you. We're looking forward to all the amazing work. Dr. Lewis?
Well, it is amazing work and I just wanna commend them. But also, we received notification today the state wants to come bring 60 reading coaches to come and spend time at this innovative program. So they'll be visiting us in October, I believe it is. But it's pretty impressive that 60 coaches throughout the state are gonna be coming to spend some time.
No pressure.
No pressure. But it is tremendous work they're doing there and it's, they know it's just getting underway. But it's, it's important for them to see because these are all reading coaches from schools in need of improvement. So they're coming to see how we've got this structured and they're very pleased to come visit us.
We're good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you so very much. All right, item 5.06 is the employee handbook. Ready? It's ready? It's not ready? All right, it's gonna sit on the table for 30 days. And then we have a question. Ms. McCray?
Okay. I still haven't fully gone over it, but I kinda started down the rabbit hole. And I understand our purpose here. It's to have an employee handbook that'll be easy to kinda flip through, see the highlights, because most people don't wanna take the time to read through all our policies. I guess my confusion here though is, as I started looking at it, some of it is not worded the same as our policies. For example, and I'll send more to you, you know, equal opportunity employment is not the same wording as what our policy is. And our policy is based off of federal law, so that gives me some concern. You know, we mentioned drug-free workforce, that if you are convicted, this was kinda funny to me, but anyway, that if you're convicted of possession of drugs on the school district property, you have to let the employee, the employer know. Well, to me, that's kinda confusing because later on, we have another one that is pretty much if you're charged, you know, anything related to a crime, no matter where it happens, you have to let your employer know. So to me, that's kinda confusing because I feel like it's saying one thing about drugs and another thing in general. I'm just thrown out some of these things. So I guess. Yes. Yeah, under one thing, it says drug-free workplace and it talks about how you have to notify the district if you are convicted of a violation that occurred on the Muskogee County workplace area. And then under a whole nother thing, it talks about how just in general, if you're an employee, and I think this is right, everybody seems to be nodding. If you're an employee of the district, if you're charged with a crime, you don't have to be convicted. If you're just charged anything, you are to let your employee, employer know. So to me, these are kinda conflicting and can cause some confusion. Because one says, oh, tell them about drugs if it happened, which is kinda funny, but if it happens on the district property. Yeah. Yeah.
In another area.
If you, if you, if you say one special thing here, but then there's a broader one here, people get confused as to what is applicable.
You want, need you to put your microphone on, Ms. Buckner?
I'm trying to figure out how the people will get confused. So one says, report on the school and the other one says, report everywhere.
It's, if you're arrested anywhere.
Okay, okay, so the school and then everywhere.
Well, one specifically talks about drugs and it says, if you're convicted of having drugs on school property, you let the employer know. The other one says, no matter where you are, if you're just charged, you let your employer know. So my concern is, somebody that maybe got convicted of a drug-related thing might read the first one and kinda go, oh, I didn't really have to, no, they weren't convicted. They were just charged. They may think they don't have to report that because there is a part that talks about drugs and it only mentions conviction and it only men, mentions it's school property. So I just think it would, it, it's just one, and I can keep going and really, it's not up to me to determine.
The one, the one that says the school property, it does not have, it does not say have to be reported to, further reporting?
Right, it says it doesn't, it doesn't mention anything other than a conviction. But I'm just, and it's not for us to answer. I'm just saying, I'm trying to get some clarity on, you know, why some of this does not mirror our policies. And two, I guess I'm just getting ready to go through all of this and then point it all out so that our legal team can then look at it. And I'm just going ahead and saying what some of those concerns are because when I do these things behind the scenes, sometimes nobody knows it. And so I just kinda wanna put that out. The other part that I was real concerned about was the weapons part. Because I know we talked about this and then we didn't do a policy, but I'm just curious as how, there's a sentence that says, "The board shall act forcefully to control anyone who possesses weapons of any kind to school or school-sponsored activities." You know, that kinda sounds like I'm gonna be out there. So I, I definitely wanna, you know, look at that language as well. And there's not a policy that I could really look at to determine why that language was being used. So anyway, just to say, I'm going down a rabbit hole. I will CC everybody on it when I send it, probably in a week.
Cool beans. You're gonna send it before? Because you, I'm just curious because if it's gonna sit awhile, will you send it like before next?
She said next week.
Okay, good. So while next work, work session, we can see whether your concerns have been addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Ms. Carter?
I just wanted to make one clarification. Employee handbooks should not be written like your board policy. Board policy offers a, it summarizes what's in it. The complaint has been understanding of the board policy, the legalese piece of it. The intent is to summarize it in a way that it's understandable in layman's terms with a link to the details associated with the board policy that dictates what that summary is. So the intent was purposeful in changing the, the language, the verbiage to be that for anyone who's reading it so they understand immediately how it applies to them.
And I, I understand that that was the intent. And I, I hear, I say this a lot. That it's, the lawyer in me. I know it's the intent to summarize, but it does really concern me when it says some things different than what our policy says. Because like, under the equal opportunity employment, it cites a lot of categories that we don't actually have in our policy. And so, you know, a lot of people might read the handbook and not really go further to look at the policy. So I just wanna make, again, in plenty of places, if we are shortening it, taking out legalese, I'm all for that. I definitely agree with that. But I, I don't wanna do it in a way that causes any kinda confusion because it's new words or new categories from what the other one said. I just wanna make sure they're succinct. And again, yeah, that there's no discrepancies between the two.
I just have a question.
Okay.
My question is for Greg. Have you all reviewed the employee handbook and sort of gone through it and make sure that the policies don't conflict with the board policy?
So I did not, I did not personally do that, but I know in the spring that one of my partners worked with Ms. Carter to review those. That's not to say that we aren't open to suggestions on how to phrase things better or if something is not correct and needs to be corrected before y'all vote on it. We certainly welcome that input, so.
Sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
But we have been, we have been part of the process in working with Ms. Carter.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
From listening to the things that Ms. McCray said, there doesn't really seem to be any conflict. There may be some language changes that you may want to change, but there certainly isn't any conflict from what she just read. There may be some further things that are different, but if you wanna change the language, and I'm not, I don't have any problems with you changing the language. Get it, where every board member wants the language to be. I don't have any problems, but where, if there's a conflict, it has to be changed, has to be changed. But what I was, when, for what I was listening to her, that from what she just read, I didn't see any conflict.
We're done? Oh, hold on, hold on, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Wait a minute.
Conflict, there probably is one.
Conflicts are too. I don't have to be a lawyer to know when something conflicts.
All right.
I can just be able to read.
All right, so we're going to, this is on the table for 30 days. Anyone who wants to have any input, this is your opportunity to do so. And let's see, where are we, where are we now? 5.07, the use of facilities lease agreement. Motion to approve the lease agreement with the STEAM, STEAM and Inventors LLC for use of the selected properties during the 24-25 school year. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? All right, we're ready to vote now. That passes. Next item is 5.08 Georgetown Elementary School HVAC budget. Motion, motion by Ms. Chambers. Second by Ms. Frey. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. That passes. And 5.09 is the HVAC contract for downtown elementary. Motion by Ms. Frey, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. We're ready to vote now. Consent agenda. Are there any particular items where there are additional questions or you want to pull out to discuss or vote on separately? No, I need a motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Jackson. We're ready to vote now. And as always, we want to thank our, um, public-private partnerships for the donations and their support in public education, as well as to the citizens. You can see where the EastFloss dollars are continuing to, um, improve. And our, our ways to learn and places to learn. All right, Dr. Lewis, you want to?
Just simply, we had a great ribbon cutting this past Saturday at the new Mary Buckner Academy. Uh, very proud of that school, and, uh, thanks to all the people who went into, uh, working with that, uh, in terms of preparing for the event and making it come to fruition. So we're very excited about it and, uh, look forward to great things coming out of Mary Buckner Academy.
Now, we did a lot of thank yous and, and taking pictures. And I do want to say that we, we really appreciate our glue, who is the glue for everything that we do. And that's Ms. Karen Jones.
Yep.
Somehow, she didn't, she missed the thank you list. And I want to make sure that we always emphasize that. As well as, I don't think we emphasize enough, a thank you to our citizens for supporting, continuing to support the EastFloss. All right, so we do have an executive session. I need a motion to, to go into executive session for a pers- Yes, ma'am, I was trying to read it. For, for a legal and personnel matter. All in favor, vote please. Jeez, all right.